Hello. At this time, it's 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting to order. It's Wednesday, July 22. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting. We normally meet on the third Wednesday of the month. I think this is the third Wednesday, but given the current COVID situation, we may have to deviate from our normal meeting schedule, and we will be publicly noticing any future meetings. There's a potential of a meeting in the next couple of weeks. I'd like to briefly introduce the members of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board. I'm Holly D'Arlo Babcock. I'm serving as chair this year. I have Tom Solon, who's our vice chair, Kate Stoll, and Beth Williams over there. Crystal Whalen is here on the other side. We are expecting Elizabeth Brown to join us late, and Cindy Van Conant is unable to be here this evening. Also around the table, to my right, is Andy Corey, our superintendent. Over on, all the way over there, is Gina Burksog and Bob Thompson, our assistant superintendents. We have Tim Grison and Rick Barnes from our middle school and high school. So at this point, I would like to appoint a process observer. Is there someone who's willing to be our process? Tom Solon will serve as our process observer. And I'm also going to make a suggestion for some amended agenda adjustments. We have two items on our agenda this evening for discussion. One is our return-to-school opening plan, and the other is a community resolution on racism. If it's okay with the board, I would like to propose an agenda where we hear our presentation on the school building reopening plan. We have public input on that plan. The board will then discuss that plan, and then we will move to the second item on the discussion, which would be a presentation which Mr. Corey will do on the community resolution on racism. Again, public input, and again, a discussion. So is there any objection to that plan from the board? So for those of you here, you can note that that's how we're going to approach this meeting. So when it says 6:10, public input, that will actually be the presentation. Any questions? Okay. At this...
Can you hear better?
The, I can't...
It's already really hard to hear.
Yeah. I will yell as loud as I can, but let me see if...
Just pretend you're mad at me.
Hmm?
Just pretend you're mad at me.
Yes, I will pretend that I'm angry. No, I'm good. Can you hear better now if I get closer to the microphone? Okay. All right, thank you. So at this point, I'd like to proceed through some of our minutes. I need to get a motion to accept the June 30 minutes of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board.
So moved.
Moved by Tom Solon, seconded by Beth Williams. Are there any conversation on that discussion? Okay, all in favor? Six-zero. I also need a motion to accept, as presented, the minutes from the public hearing on June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Tom Solon, seconded by Beth Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's approved, six-zero. I also need to, I need to take from the table the minutes of the regular meeting, public hearing, and non-public session conducted on June 17. I need a motion to take from the table those minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Tom Solon, seconded by Beth Williams. All those in favor? Okay. Now, I need a motion to accept, as amended, the minutes from the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board on June 17, 2020. These are the following amendments. Page one, lines 38, replace counsel with council, let's spell it correctly. Page three, line 34, insert in-person and before hybrid. Page four, line six, requirement should be plural. Page five, line 38, replace out with our. Page 11, line four, replace we with we are. And page 11, line seven, insert we before have.
So moved as amended.
Moved by Tom Solon, seconded by what, Beth? Is there any other amendments or conversation on that discussion? All in favor? Six-zero. I need a motion to accept, as amended, the public hearing minutes of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board on July 17, 2020, with the following amendment. Note that Kelly Sealy, business administrator, participated electronically.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
So moved.
Moved by Tom Solon, seconded by Beth. Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero-zero. Finally, we have our non-public minutes. I need a motion to accept our non-public minutes from June 17, 2020, of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board.
So moved.
Moved by Tom Solon, seconded by Beth Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Six-zero-zero. Thank you. At this point, we'll move to nominations, resignations, and correspondence. Mr. Corey?
We don't have any of those tonight, so we can move forward.
Great. I just have one comment on correspondences. I just want the public to know that we've received many emails regarding the reopening, regarding both agenda items, and we are grateful to the community for their correspondence. We've compiled many of the questions on the reopening plan into a frequently asked question document that the board members have access to, so that we can address some of the concerns of the community. We are not going to be formally asking questions, but we have this document to guide our discussion. We will try to cover as much as possible, but recognizing that this is not a meeting where we will be taking a vote on this plan, but we are discussing it and reviewing it. So as many of those concerns will be addressed as possible. And that's it, really. Okay. So, at this point, I'm going to turn this over to the presenters, but before I do so, I just want to take a minute, I know, I don't want to step on Andy, but to thank our administration of the SAU 41 for their incredible amount of time, effort, energy, diligence, consideration, and compassion by which they have approached this presentation. So, Mr. Corey?
To follow up on Holly, I'd like to recognize Assistant Superintendent Thompson and Assistant Superintendent Burksog for all their efforts. The leadership team, which is made up from principals and assistant principals from across the SAU, worked basically for the last six weeks on this, and it was our number-one priority, and it will be after this meeting. They will make adjustments where needed and take your input. And I'd also like to thank the 60 teachers who also contributed to this group, and then we have our community advisory committee who have been very, very valuable to me. Their local pediatricians, mental health experts, people with expertise that I don't necessarily possess, and I would be able to, you know, ask them questions, get their professional input, and they all have a vested stake because they're residents of Hollis and Brookline, and the vast majority of them have kids in our school. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Thompson to go through, to start through the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Corey. We present to the community and to the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board our SAU 41 roadmap to reopening our school buildings. And I think you're going to hear two reoccurring themes throughout this presentation. The first one is that the health and safety of our students and our staff is absolutely paramount. Many of you may be aware that the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District is an award-winning district when it comes to health and safety. We are an exemplar around the state, and this was true prior to the pandemic and will continue to be as we move forward. The second theme that you're going to hear in our presentation is parent choice, parent and student choice. Parents will have the option to have their children remain in remote learning, if that has worked for them. They will also have the option to have their children come back to school full-time. We are able to offer that as an option because of the current local conditions in regards to the pandemic. As of today, there are zero active cases of COVID-19 in the town of Hollis, and there are zero active cases of COVID in the town of Brookline. There has been trending downward data in terms of the number of cases, number of hospitalizations, and the numbers of deaths. This could change, and if it does change, we will reevaluate our position and look for other possible options. But the presentation that you hear today is based upon current data. But more important than that data is conversations that we've had with parents. We have, as a leadership team, have talked to a lot of parents who have expressed their concerns about having their children come back to a physical school environment. Their children may suffer from an immune disorder. They may have a family member that is immune-compromised as well. Their children might have anxiety about returning to the building, so they would like to remain in remote. I've had a conversation with parents, with students who have school phobia, who actually, remote learning actually worked pretty well for them. That should be an option for those families. But we've also had a lot of conversations with parents who are really concerned about their children's social and emotional well-being, about isolation, and they really feel that it is important that their children get back to a physical school environment. These parents do understand that that has some inherent risk to it, but they're willing to accept that. This is not an easy decision for parents to make. In fact, many of the educators, as Andy indicated, there were 60 educators that have worked to develop the plan that you see here today. Those 60 educators, many of them are parents. We are parents ourselves. This, for me personally, is the most difficult decision I have ever made in regards to my children's education. So we understand the difficulty that this decision has on parents. And just so our parents and our community know, that us educators, when we developed this plan, we really did so not only through the lens of being an educator, but also through the lens of being a parent. What health and safety measures need to be in place for me, both as an educator and as a parent, if I'm going to say, or we're going to say, that children are going to return to this building? And that's really what this plan is based on. So just to walk you through a little bit of our planning process. This process began in April, approximately on April 16, when Governor Sununu announced his executive order closing schools for the remainder of the year. We had conversations on that day, saying, "Okay, time to get to work. Time to build a framework. We need to talk about next year. What's that going to look like?" And that planning really began by us collecting a tremendous amount of data. We went through and read every report that we could find from a government or a non-government agency that provided schools with guidance. These reports really, each one had a different lens, whether it was the CDC or the American Academy of Pediatrics, that really helped to inform some of our thinking as we began to plan for the school year. We also engaged in conversations with educators across the globe, from Asia and from Europe, because these schools have been in session. When we were moved to remote, some of these districts, or some of these countries, were actually opening back up. We had conversations with them. How do you do this? How do you do it safely? We also, in our planning, utilized the incident command model. Many of you who are familiar with emergency management are familiar with incident command. It is a structured way of making decisions and streamlining communications. There is a massive amount of work that needs to be done when you look to reopen a school, and the incident command system provides us with a model to be able to do that efficiently and effectively. And from all of this emerged a framework, again, based upon guiding resources. As I've already mentioned, at the end of June, the American Academy of Pediatrics released guidance for schools. Many of you are familiar with the Center for Disease Control's reopening of schools plan. The Environmental Protection Agency offered a very comprehensive report on air quality. The Learning Policy Institute tracked several countries in the various plans that each country put in place, providing additional, an additional framework. The National Association of School Nurses, the National Council on School Facilities, and then just last Tuesday, the governor released the New Hampshire Grades K-12 Back-to-School Guidance. We also looked at information from the New Hampshire School Nurses Association and the Occupational Safety and Hazard Administration. So again, going back to the concept of the incident command model, here it is. At the top, you see the superintendent's plan, and what we did is we divided the work into various categories. We looked at instructional, technology, human resources, health and safety, facilities, student services, food service, extracurricular, and transportation. We solicited the help of over 60 educators from each one of the six buildings. Those were administrators, they were teachers, support staff, paraeducators, food service workers, coaches. We looked at each person and says, "Where is their expertise? Where can we put them where they can be most effective when it comes to developing these plans?" We also added a nurse to each one of these committees, because it was critically important that we had, you know, that nurse there to be able to provide that perspective as well. So each one of these groups met on many occasions. They had a facilitator. Each facilitator would meet with SAU administration weekly. We would have conversations, what's going well, what do you need support with, you know, and we would begin to start to draft our comprehensive, comprehensive plan. We reviewed considerations, we added district-specific considerations, and at the end of the day, we compiled all of the information from these various committees, and we came up with a document that's about 45 pages long. From that 45-page document, we reviewed it, created a summary report, which is the summary report that you see included in the board packet and that you may have seen on the SAU website. Additionally, as Andy had indicated, once we had developed a plan, we really wanted to vet it through some of the experts in our community. We are very fortunate that we have doctors and nurses and mental health providers in this community that are doing this work on a daily basis. We took this plan to them. They had a lot of feedback for us. We adjusted that plan based upon their feedback, and we will continue, as the current conditions may change, to go back to this group, consult with them, to ensure that we have their feedback. And another important group of stakeholders is parents, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Gina, who will talk about our parent survey.
Thank you, Bob. So, as Bob mentioned, one of the important stakeholders would be parents and students, as well as our faculty and staff. So at the conclusion of the 2019-2020 school year, I sent out a survey to all families, and we had roughly 56% participation, and I sent a similar survey out to our staff, our instructional staff. The very specific question I asked was, "Based on what we know today, if precautions are taken, but social distancing was not possible, would your child attend school in-person in the fall?" So if you take a look at the results, there are some variations between the buildings, some highs, some lows, but overall, pretty consistently, 72% yes, which tells me that 28% is a no, which led me to believe that our already decent class sizes in many of our classes would be cut to about 70%, knowing that this isn't binding, and conditions would change, and parents would change their mind, but that gave us a starting point just to get a feel for where our families were at that time. So that was important in determining the best plans, and so our draft plan roadmap that was shared really talks about two options, because we understand fully and completely that every family has a different set of circumstances, a different set of concerns, a different set of fears and anxiety, and so we wanted to make sure that families had the ability to reflect on their own personal risk tolerance and make a choice. So there are, in this plan, two options. Option one is a return to in-person school on September 3. Parents, if they select this option, would also select if they are choosing to drop off and pick up their child at school every day, or if they select our bus transportation, knowing that masks are required on the bus. In addition, parents would choose if their child would bring their personal dedicated device, either Chromebook or laptop, every day to school, or if they would require one of our district loan devices, as we made available in the spring. Another option for families is to resume remote learning on September 3. These families would have to review and accept Remote Learning 2.0 requirements, and I state that, that it's 2.0, because we did an incredible job in March, switching over so quickly from in-person to remote in a very short period of time. Our teachers figured out how to do it on the fly. We had two days to prepare, and they learned a number of digital tools, and we did our very best. But with anything, in gathering data from our teachers, gathering data from our families, we know that we can make improvements. So there are some very huge changes to Remote Learning 2.0 and the requirements for that. These students would also need their own dedicated device that they would use in their home, or they could utilize a district loan device, just as we made available in the spring. So I'm going to walk you through what a day would look like for a student who selected in-person school. Prior to the student's arrival, families, parents, would have to assess each child using a brief screening tool, including taking a daily temperature for each of their children. Parents would contact the school to report any symptoms. Parents are only able to send students to school if they are completely symptom-free and free of exposure. Assuming that the child is free of symptoms and free of exposure, the parents would drop off the students at the designated time or at the bus stop if transportation was selected. The students, when they arrive, are required to follow protocol for entering the school building, including wearing a mask and maintaining appropriate physical distancing. In early September, and as needed throughout the year, training will be provided for students on personal and public health measures. So just as we do during flu season, we teach our kids how to wash their hands for 20 seconds. You know, in our elementary schools, we do the hand-washing song. We will continue to provide that and up it, given our current pandemic. Training will be provided on new procedures in the school building, because things will look a little different. That would include spaces that are just not available this year. For example, every student will have their own device. There is no longer a need for a shared computer lab space. That space would not be available to students during the day unless it's been repurposed for another classroom space. Training will be provided on all of the needed tech tools used in the classroom. So the transition to remote learning, students were exposed to so many new digital tech tools, and some of them caught on faster than maybe some of the adults. Some of them needed some assistance. So proper training, explanation will be provided to the students and the families to make sure that the families can support any homework, or in remote learning, the work that would be taking place. And I heard from many parents in the parent survey that passwords was the most challenging piece of this, trying to keep them all straight, so certainly training on where to find those passwords. As guidance around COVID-19 changes over the course of the year, which I certainly expect it will change over time, students will be provided with updated training so that they know exactly what new expectations would be placed on them. When students arrive to school, students are to use hand sanitizer at the sanitizer station prior to entering the classroom. Students will follow procedures and walk straight to their assigned seat. So every student in each of their classes will have an assigned seat and not to commingle. Their assigned seat is physically distanced per the CDC guidelines, which are six feet. So that is really important to note, that Bob and I went from building to building and moved the desks to see how many desks we could fit with six feet of separation and what that looked like. It certainly doesn't look the same. It certainly is different, but we can hold 20 students in our classrooms when we remove furniture, excess furniture that is not needed, potentially a bookcase, depending on the space, in our high school science classrooms, and I believe in our middle school as well. We could fit 24 students. Students would each have their own set of materials, including a charged Chromebook or similar. Elementary students would remain in their homeroom, and specials would travel to them. For secondary students, they would travel to multiple classrooms. Food service will offer bagged breakfast and lunch to those interested. There will not be the selection of hot food items where you go through the line and pick and choose, but bagged breakfast and lunch would be provided. During the day, if a student or a staff member is displaying a symptom of COVID, they will be masked, brought to the secondary nurse's office, which is a nicer way of saying the isolation station, and we've already worked with our nurses and our building leadership to identify those auxiliary spaces. Those spaces would be, have a good ventilation, would have access to a telephone, and would have easier access to an exit, so if a student needed to be sent home, they wouldn't have to travel throughout the entire building. And the next step is being sent home. Students will be required to have a doctor's clearance, or cleared by the school nurse, in order to return to school. I would like to add that on Monday, the DHHS did release new guidance around which students need to be sent home and which can stay, and teachers as well. However, we sent that information to our advisory group, and we're going to integrate it into our plan based on recommendations. So this presentation was developed prior to that, those new guidelines that were released. Staff members would be required to follow the established procedures in human resources. In the case of a positive COVID test, notification will take place per state requirements, and contact tracing will begin. The response varies based on the tracing. So we have to take a look at every situation individually. A student, I use the example of a preschool student who is brought to school by a parent and is present in the preschool room with six or eight other students and one teacher, the response could very well be different than a 10th grader who travels on the bus and travels to seven different classrooms with seven different groupings throughout the day. So just as in last March, when we had a presumed positive case that turned out not to be positive, we took a look to see where that individual went throughout the day and what buildings he or she was in, and tried to identify the potential exposure, and we made a decision based on that, in consultation with the state as well. All right, during the day and dismissal. So students will wash their hands with soap and water for 20 seconds periodically. When soap and water are not available, they will use hand sanitizer at the classroom Students will have a staggered dismissal to alleviate traffic caused by additional personal vehicles. We are fully aware that we already have traffic issues in town during morning drop-off and pickup, and we are planning already for a more robust number of cars in the road, and we've had meetings with transportation, our officers from Brookline and Hollis, and our building leadership, to identify different ways to alleviate this situation to the best of our ability. Students will need to bring their device home each afternoon to charge their device and to complete homework as necessary. Okay, so if the child selects, or the parent selects, Remote Learning 2.0, it will look a little different. Direct instruction will follow the in-person instruction model in regard to the schedule and the expectation for learning. Daily live Zoom sessions are required for instruction. The session length and the daily frequency are based on district-determined best practice. So that would be very different for a five-year-old than it would be for a 15-year-old. So we've identified that sweet spot for instruction for each of those ages and stages on our instructional committee. Specific expectations for learning will be shared at the onset by the teacher, including the mandatory specials in the elementary. In our spring, it was overwhelming for families to try to log on and know where to find assignments for all the classes, so our specials became optional. But we know that's not really an option. We are required to provide this curriculum, and it is so critically important to the development of our children, that it's not optional. It is mandatory, including when you're in remote learning. The pacing will mirror in-person instruction. Assessment expectations will be shared at the onset, so for students who are in remote learning, they will, it will be clear to them when it's okay to get assistance from an older sibling, and when it is not okay to get assistance from an older sibling or a parent or a peer. Some more specifics. For elementary, there will be a mandatory morning meeting, mandatory math, and mandatory ELA lesson daily. Science and social studies would flip-flop every other day. After this whole-class instruction, there'll be practice, remediation, and small group instruction to take place. That might, the small group instruction might very well look like a separate Zoom invite for a smaller number of students, so the teacher can work more closely with that student or those students and their individual needs. student or those students and their individual needs. Feedback will be provided in an identified format. In the secondary level, Rock and Cav Block will be provided in the remote learning environment. Students will log into Zooms following their daily schedule. There will be practice to follow the mini lessons, and homework will be assigned in addition to the practice and classwork. Feedback on all this work will be provided in an identified format. We have established a group that is creating videos and how-to sheets for our teachers, for our students, so that we know exactly where to find that feedback. There are so many options, whether it's an email or a voice feedback or putting feedback on the document itself. So we want to make sure that we're all on the same page for where to find that feedback so our students can grow and learn from that.
So Gina walked us through what a typical day would look like for a student. And now what I would like to do is just sort of dig into the roadmap, the document that was released to the board and to the public as well. And so first, we'll start by talking about health and safety. And I apologize, a lot of this will be redundant with what you heard Gina speak about. So the first is, parents will be required to do a daily health screening of their child. It's important to realize, we have actually had a very small cohort of students who have received onsite physical services through special education here in the building. And we had to build a framework for that. We put procedures in place. And we believe that those procedures were successful and we might, we will be able to use many of those as we look to reopen our school buildings this fall. The daily health screenings is something now that a parent will participate in. They will take their child's temperature, they'll answer a couple of questions, they provide the school that information prior to the student even coming onsite. The committee also talked about targeted temperature checks. We did have a conversation about universal temperature checks. And due to the asymptomatic nature of COVID-19 in children, the decision was made to move to a targeted model where a student who goes to the nurse's office would have their temperature checked, a student returning from an absence would have their temperature checked. There may be other opportunities throughout the day where we check temperatures. Masks, and a better word is face coverings, because that encompasses a wider variety, will be required when social distancing is not possible. Again, we believe that the setup of our buildings, the class sizes that we have, do allow for physical distancing, but it is not possible to do that all the time. It is not possible to do that when you're in the hallway. It is not possible to do that at certain times in a classroom, depending on what that activity is. And when you cannot maintain six feet of physical distancing, you will be required to wear a mask. We'll also have staggered dismissal times. This may mean releasing carpool students early, just creating an opportunity to reduce the amount of traffic that takes place in the hallways at the end of the day. And again, as Gina had mentioned, hand sanitizer and wipes are available in classrooms and common areas. We've actually been receiving very large shipments of hand sanitizer wipes and PPE. We're able to procure plenty to make sure that all the classrooms have all of the items that they need to safely reopen.
Instructional. So this work began last year. There was the assumption that not all of the curriculum was able to be covered when we had to drastically just jump into remote learning and learn so many new pieces about how to do that effectively. So teachers began this work in the springtime, identifying pieces of the curriculum that were not covered last spring. Through professional learning communities, this information was shared to the next grade level or the next course in the sequence. That conversation will continue in the fall. There will be collaboration time built in for teachers to discuss student progress. We will continue the development of enhanced remediation for our struggling students. There is the assumption that we'll have students who will struggle, given anything from potential gaps in instruction to just the switch from remote to in-person or the continuation of remote learning. There will be instruction in personal and public health measures for our students. Where appropriate, we are encouraging our teachers to take their classes outdoors and complete instruction outside. Take advantage of the fresh air, especially in the fall. There will no longer be shared instructional materials and spaces, and that's more of a consideration for our elementaries when there's the classroom container of glue. So we will not have that anymore. As I mentioned, elementary specials would take place in the homeroom classroom. For technology, as I mentioned, all students will have access to their own dedicated device, Chromebook or laptop or similar. Students would be assigned a laptop when one is not available for them at home. These students would have to ensure that their devices are charged for the next day. For human resources, this subcommittee looked at our very robust volunteering program. We have hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that come into all of our school buildings each day. We want to make sure that our volunteers are limited in terms of if a volunteer wants to come in to read a story to a class, that can be done electronically through a Zoom session. However, there are, there will be a continued need for some very specified volunteer opportunities, assisting with physical distancing, assisting with monitoring of students in various locations. There will be staff development in evidence-based public health practices. There will be professional development in the use of the digital tools, professional development, ongoing video support, ongoing how-to documents, as well as an identified quote-unquote expert in each of our buildings that folks can go to. The custodial responsibilities will be adjusted to include increased deep cleaning as well as shifting the hours for our custodians so we can maximize our sanitation during the day. In addition to that, we are providing professional development on what a sanitized classroom looks like and the appropriate tools for doing so. We have one mister in each of our buildings, we have two at the high school, and we have enough sprayers for each of our second shift custodian to clean out with a hydrogen peroxide based product our classrooms at the end of each day. As part of our budget, we have included the hiring of an additional nurse. It was a sub-nurse to travel between our six buildings where the need arose. And right now, we absolutely expect that there will be a need for that nurse in various buildings, and that nurse would be directed where the need lied. We will continue to restrict our professional development for our teachers in terms of travel, and we will not allow our teachers to travel outside of the state.
So in terms of facilities, as Gina had mentioned, we've expanded our health offices. There'll be a primary health office location. That's where students will go to get Band-Aids, medication, you know, students who check in with a nurse on a daily basis. And then there'll be an auxiliary location where any student who is symptomatic would go to that secondary location. And we're in the process of developing procedures for how do we get that student from the classroom to that auxiliary location, supervision of that student, and then how do we get that student safely out of the building? We're also reducing access to common areas. This will look different in each of the buildings in the co-op, but for example, computer labs. Since students will be provided with their own devices, there really is not a need to have the computer lab, which means that provides additional rooms in our buildings that we can use for smaller instruction that's more spread out. In some cases, that may mean additional space for our nurses. We're also restricting access to lockers. This will mean that students will carry with them what they need. The benefit of having a Chromebook is many of the applications and textbooks and materials that we use actually exist in the digital world now. But it's just not possible to have a student at a locker and social distance, and it also reduces surface contact of the virus. We will remove excess furniture from classrooms. Again, this will vary from classroom to classroom. We are in the process right now of obtaining storage units that will be able to move some of the larger furniture items to, just to free up space, to be able to space out classroom desks. We will be increasing airflow by opening windows and interior doors when appropriate. We're very fortunate that we have lovely fall weather. It may prove a little bit more difficult in the winter time, but as we know, increased airflow is very important when it comes to combating the virus. We've also hired an independent consultant who is in the process right now of reviewing our HVAC systems. We'll make recommendations to the SAU and then we will take whatever corrective action is necessary. Looking at our student services group. I served on this group and we spent a great deal of time talking about the need for socialization. Really, we have kids that have been in isolation for six months. They haven't seen their friends, they've had limited contact, physical contact with the outside world. We really need to make this a focus of the work that we do in the fall first and foremost. So this, you know, at an elementary school, this looks at more recess time, more, you know, circle time. At the middle school, this may mean more rock or advisory time. And at the high school, this could look like more cav block, but being really intentional about socialization. We also, as a group, discussed the importance of the need for social and emotional programming. This was a central component of our school year in 2019 and 2020 before we went in to remote learning. We have adopted as a district the Choose Love Program, which was created by Charlotte Lewis. Her son Jesse Lewis was murdered at Sandy Hook Elementary School, and she created a program that is being used across not only the United States but across the world. And that was a program that our teachers really, really got into and is something that we're going to continue to promote. And not only does that program promote social and emotional learning, but it also deals with issues of discrimination, racism, equity, and anti-discrimination. In terms of student services, we will also hold all of our IEP 504 and student progress meetings remotely through Zoom for the time being. And additionally, staff will receive training in mental health first aid. That is a research-based program that assists people who may be having a mental health crisis or may need greater support. And at the middle school, we've had, the majority of staff have been trained, a number of staff members at the high school have been trained. So it is not unrealistic to be able to train every single member of the Hollis and Brookline school system in mental health first aid. Since it is a research-based program, there's a number of hours that teachers have to accumulate in order to get the certification to be trained in mental health first aid. Looking at food services, as Gina said, we're moving to a grab-and-go model. But it's really important for people to realize, if you are a family and you choose remote learning, you still have access to food service, food from the school. And this is really critically important because as many of you are aware, there are some children in our community who rely solely on the food that they receive from the school. They get their breakfast here, they get their lunch here, and in some cases, that's it. And with the help of the nonprofit program and 68 Hours of Hunger, which we've partnered with, we're actually able to provide students with meals for the 68 hours that exist from the time a child leaves school and returns on Monday. So it's critically important. You shouldn't, as a parent, not have to make a decision about returning to school because you're concerned about your child having access to food. They will. We'll also move to a cashless purchase model. This is not a huge leap for us. For the most part, we've been fairly cashless with our food service program. This obviously will reduce contact with the virus, but it's also important to note too, if a child does not have money in their food, in their account, they are still given access to food. We do not restrict food to students for any reason. Also, unfortunately, donations of food for, you know, the parties that occur throughout the year or the celebrations will be restricted as we start the school year. We will also be suspending concessions at sporting events as well.
Okay, in terms of extracurricular activities, many of our guidelines for our athletics will be driven by NHIAA and our tri-county leagues. However, assuming we are able to have some seasons, all students will have a temperature check prior to participation. There will be no mask requirement for students engaged in strenuous physical activity. And students would be required to bring their own supply of water to their athletic activity. There will be limited public attendance at the game, limited to individual families. For pickup, parents would need to stay in their vehicle during student pickup, and the students would walk one by one to the appropriate car. There'd be no access by the opposing team to our locker rooms. That's really similar to our town league baseball or soccer. You go to the game ready to go, fully dressed. We will have to limit our facility use by our outside organizations. Any facility use would have to be approved by the superintendent. And I say limit because already, right now, our Brookline Before School Program is running their summer program, and we will continue to offer before and after-school care in Brookline as well as in Hollis. All overnight travel will be suspended that's school-related.
Transportation is an area that we spend a lot of time on, and there's a couple of issues with transportation. One, it really is incredibly difficult to social distance on a bus. If any of you have seen our buses, we're very efficient with getting students to school. We fill every seat. It is not possible to social distance. And the other complicating factor is there's several federal regulations in regards to the safety of school buses that prevent us from taking certain safety measures that we might otherwise take. For example, adding Plexiglas to school bus seats. It's not possible, it's not allowed. So really, what we're looking at, and part of our conversation was, do we offer bus service? It is not a requirement in the state of New Hampshire that high schools provide bus service. But really, in having that conversation, we thought about families that absolutely otherwise would not be able to get their students to school if it wasn't for the bus. So what we're asking is, if you have the ability to drive your child to school, please do so. We really would like to have a situation where the students who are accessing the bus are students who do not have another means of transportation to get to school. Face masks will be required for students to access the bus. They must be worn the entire time. We're asking that students use hand sanitizer before riding on the bus. We are assigning seating on the bus. Siblings will be able to sit with one another. At the co-op, we traditionally have had the high school students in the back and the middle school students in the front. High school and middle school siblings will be able to sit together. The assigned seating also assists us with our ability to contact trace. If a student were to be able to get sick, we would be able to identify anyone who sat within a certain number of feet of that student. When possible, again, we'll keep the windows down. That airflow is really important. It's a little bit more tricky to do in the winter time. And then also, routine daily sanitizing of the school buses. So we have a detailed school year transition plan. We have the seven to eight-page document that you see in the board packet. We also have the 43-page document that contains a lot more of the detailed information, and Gina will share some of that. So there are building-level guidelines that are not in the SAU plan because every building is different. They're arranged differently, the needs are differently, different developmentally. And the larger document really identifies processes and procedures and makes recommendations to the buildings. They are minimum standards. And essentially, what each of the buildings will do, they have a lot of heavy lifting to do and a lot of work to do to develop their building-level plans, which they've been doing, again, since we went into remote learning. Those plans will be brought to the SAU leadership where we will vet those plans based upon our three models that we're proposing.
So these are some screenshots from our very detailed lengthy plan. And for each of our subcommittees, folks were asked to provide recommendations for fully remote, a hybrid model, and in-person instruction. So, or, that would be Model Three. So for the instructional subcommittee, one of the first questions was, how many students can we fit in a 900-square-foot classroom if social distancing requirements were in place? So as I mentioned, we went around and we moved desks, moved them around. And it's awkward, but with six feet of separation, we can fit 20 student desks in most of our classrooms. And I say most because it's some of our kindergarten classrooms that we cannot, based on the smaller size. However, the numbers are, our specs are well below 20 anyway. We can fit 24 in a high school or middle school lab classroom, the science classrooms. Furniture and carpets would Furniture and carpets would need to be removed from many of our spaces. We also considered what a small group instruction looked like. And that would look like potentially an alternate setting that would require masks, space shields, or Plexiglas depending on the space. And then a concern is viewing the board might not be ideal in that awkwardly configured 20 desks in the classroom, but it was something certainly to consider. How do we minimize transmission of the virus through surface contact? Do we go paper, paperless? How do we manage classroom libraries, et cetera? The list goes on. So in remote, there's no sharing of supplies other than with siblings. It may be some stealing of pencils. I experienced that in my house. But each student would be required to have their own Chromebook or device. In a hybrid model, it's sort of a hybrid of Model One and Three. So I'll switch over to Model Three. Every student has his or her own device with them at all times. We would minimize any shared supplies. I've asked our, our building leaders to discuss with their teachers to really think about that school supply list, that back-to-school list. What is reasonable for all kids to have with them in order to complete the year of instruction? Make sure that if we're going to request a notebook, it's going to be utilized and that it's actually needed. We also have to coordinate with our specialists in our elementary because if we are going to have the music teacher travel from room to room, we need to make sure that the music teacher has, the, the students have the supplies needed for that music teacher as well. In person, students can collaborate on Google Docs if they're six feet apart, but in the same space. As we mentioned, we're closing shared space. Individual buildings in our, well, in all of our, in all of our buildings, we'd have to determine best practice for classroom libraries. This is especially important when our elementary students have their just right book, their book bin. So rather than having free access to return the book and grab a new one at any time, we'll have a procedure where there's a time that that's appropriate, a holding off on the books until those are properly cleaned before they return to the classroom library. But each building will determine the best practice for that. Students will be using backpacks and we will not be using lockers. For technology, we really looked at all of our digital tools, both from the feedback from our teachers, but also the, the technology subcommittee individually. After exploring many options, Zoom was recommended as the best meeting space for, for the particular options it had available for teachers to utilize. However, not all teachers knew how to use all the options, so we need to make sure that we provide enough training so everyone knows how to optimize the features. As a secondary option, the big blue button is our backup recommendation. Screencastematic and Screencastify were certainly identified across the board as really helpful tools for our, for our teachers to develop lessons. For human resources, a really important consideration is what is the process for staff members who are unable to work?
Like, once you've made that remote choice, it's going to be harder to move into the building necessarily. We're going to look at different times to do that. Is that a pretty accurate? Whereas-
That's my current assessment, yes.
If you are in person and for some reason you need to go remote, that's going to be an easier or quicker transition for us to make. Whether you're-
Yes.
-being quarantined, or you think you've been exposed, or you just don't feel comfortable anymore in the building and you want to be out of the building, that's going to be an easier switch than the, the vice versa.
Yes.
Okay. Just summarizing. Did you have another question?
Yep. I got it.
Okay.
Question two is about what are we looking for outcomes? And I would go back to graduation this year and one of our student speakers brought up the fact that this class had gone through 9/11. And if we all think back to 9/11, that was a very traumatic event and it changed us all. And this same group that had been through 9/11 had just had their senior year taken away by a pandemic. That same group has prom tomorrow night, okay? So they're getting everything, but they're getting everything differently. And that would be kind of my goal by the end of this year, that the students get as much as we possibly can deliver academically because that's why we exist. But that is not just our number one priority. Part of the lesson that students are learning is resiliency, you know? And that's one of the foundations of our country. There are many historical events, good and bad, that have taught us and shaped us. And just like when we read in the paper about the 100-year-old lady that survived the 1918 Spanish Flu and just recently survived COVID. Our students will talk about this probably forever and they will have stories, just like we have stories. So what I'm looking for is to be as normal as experienced as it possibly can for a group of students who are experiencing something that we hope no one experiences again. In the midst of that is to deliver quality math, science, English, history, and all our specials. And we have an outstanding staff and they have always stepped to the plate during my time here. I know they're very nervous. We're all very nervous. That's a natural emotion. And as we get closer to the date, that emotion is going to become even more difficult. If you look at some of the comments by the experts, all of us, whether we're students or adults, have been running at a stress level which is pretty close to maximum. And at no point have we come down yet because there hasn't been a time to come down. And what we're doing now is we're actually going from a high point to ramping back up again. So I'm looking to deliver as normal a year as I can, teach our children about resiliency and what makes us great as a country, and at the same time, teach them that as a community, we can overcome anything.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
I just wanted to say, I mean, this is a trivial thing, but I would just ask that if we do, or if that decision is made, that if kids are remote and we can't necessarily get them back in person, whether it be a quarter or a semester or however we do it, that we make that information known to people as part of the decision-making so that people can weigh that as part of their decision-making in, in when they're deciding. And I, again, I really do, I appreciate the fact that we're giving people a choice and we're working so hard to do that because that's, or you guys are working so hard to do that because just giving that opportunity to have a choice whether to go in person or, or online. So thank you again.
Okay. Thank you very much for your input. Thanks for the discussion. Do you guys need anything else from us at this point? So I assume you'll work more at the proposal, put more things together, and we'll discuss it again next time.
That is correct.
All right. Sounds good. Okay. So at this point, I'd like to move on to the community resolution on racism. I hope that Andy can do, can you present it a little bit? Thank you.
About four weeks ago, I received a, a resolution regarding racism, inclusion, and tolerance. Let me give you a little background. I had been communicating with community members, moms and dads who live in our communities of Hollis and Brookline regarding the tragic events that have been happening across the country. It's a very, very important topic to me. At the same time, our energy was being devoted to reopening. So as a result of those conversations, I received the following resolution. And I'm going to read you the three main points of the resolution so you know what we are discussing. And then I'll give you a little bit more feedback. First piece is that SAU 41 school districts will make anti-racism and equity a strategic priority and denounce all forms of institutional racism by supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. You should understand that pretty much everything we do as an SAU comes from our strategic plan. We happened to be finishing five years. In the midst of the pandemic, we were upping that. So anything we do that we're going to do for a long-term initiative goes in the strategic plan because what we try to do is budget the plan so that we know where we're going for the next five years so we can stabilize budgets and all those pieces. So putting this into the strategic priority, into the strategic plan, gives clear direction and notifies all our boards and all our citizens where we're headed. SAU 41 will, will render services from an outside consultant approved by the boards to evaluate and advise district administration and educators on their policies, practices, and procedures relative to race, equity, and inclusion. Again, when I was discussing this with this group of citizens, part of the idea of a consultant came from me. I'll accept that responsibility simply because right now, we don't have the bandwidth. I have to focus my attention on opening schools. But this is a huge piece for me, all right? If you don't know, when I grew up, I was fortunate enough or unfortunate enough to grow up in what was categorized as the worst city in the United States of America to live. Poverty, diversity, you name it, we had it. So this is a very important topic to me, but one that I think needs to be, again, a strategic objective with a clear set of goals and guidelines. And number three, based on the consultant's recommendation, the SAU 41 school districts would develop and release a plan, a plan to address the findings. These actions may include professional development, draft new or edit policies and procedure, and review curriculum. Well, typically, when we put anything in our strategic plan, we look and see what it's going to cost us, why are we doing it? What professional development do we need? Are there policies and procedures? So the items in that item really just are the process we always utilize when we put something in our strategic plan. I have spoken to the individuals who are working on this, support what we're trying to do, but at the same time, we all know the wording needs to be reviewed. At the Hollis meeting on Monday and the Brookline meeting on Tuesday, both boards, I'll say, encouraged me to send it to legal and get a good, solid interpretation because words are very important and we want to look at that. So we're not taking it in action tonight. We're trying to gain input and understanding from our community so we know how to move forward. We're not looking to start this tomorrow, nor are we looking to delay this for months. We're trying to find a balance. And I believe that the input I received Monday and Tuesday has provided me with a lot of thought and feedback to now be able to work on this and bring it back to the board in a forum. I will also share that once again, people in our community who have heard this, maybe they're at home listening, have reached out, some with expertise much greater than mine, and have volunteered to assist in the process. So that's another reason why I like to bring difficult topics to this type of forum because it allows our community members to get involved. And what I have found during my time is we have some unbelievable professionals and experts living in our own backyard and we don't necessarily need to go 100 miles to find someone. So that's kind of where the resolution came about. I want to thank the individuals who started it because they started this discussion, which is actually a very, very good thing. And if you haven't noticed, and I'm not a social media person, but this topic is on social media and what drew my attention was not the adults. What drew my attention was the student comments. Because as superintendent, one of your roles is to represent the students to the adults. So when I realized this was important for students, as much as I don't have the bandwidth, I need to figure out a way to make it a priority. And at that point, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Corey. At this point, I'd like to open public input on this topic. Again, just a reminder, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address. Please address your statements to the board chair. Please keep your comments focused on this presentation. This is not a question and answer opportunity, but again, rather an opportunity for us to hear from you and so we can consider your input and further deliberations or discussion. Again, we're going to limit the comments to two minutes and please keep, keep the microphone after speaking. Again, please don't address comments to each other. You're not to talk about other speakers, just direct them to us and be respectful. Thank you. I'm now opening the floor for public comment.
I'm not actually here to make my public comment at this time.
Joe.
Joe Garuba, 28 Winchester Drive. I did see some of the presentation at the Hollis District on Monday. And at the Hollis District, the language of the proposed policy was read so that everybody would understand specifically. So there's a lot of whereas language in the front that's legalese. And I would ask that that be read before anybody makes their public comments tonight.
Okay. I actually will read it. It was in the board packet. So for those of you who don't regularly view our board packet, it's, it's attached to the agenda, which is posted on the SAU website before the meeting. I will read it if that's okay. Yeah? Hollis-Brookline Nondiscrimination and Equity Initiative, whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Academy of Family Physicians declares that institutionalized racism is a public health crisis. Whereas adverse childhood events are known causes of limited educational development amongst children, whereas the effects of structuralized racism is known as, is a known adverse childhood event. Whereas the National School Board Association states, quote, "We affirm in our actions that each student can, will, and shall learn. We recognize that based on factors including but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status, students are deprived of equitable education opportunities. Educational equity is the intentional allocation of resources, instruction, and opportunities according to need, requiring that discriminatory practices, prejudices, and beliefs be identified and eradicated," end quote. Whereas the district is committed to nondiscrimination, whereas Hollis-Brookline is an inclusive community, whereas the district recognizes that issues of race, equity, and inclusion affect all members of the Hollis-Brookline community regardless of their background, whereas racial justice is the systematic fair treatment of people of all races resulting in equitable opportunities and outcomes for all, whereas policy does not currently exist that explicitly addresses equity, diversity, and inclusion. Therefore, may it be resolved that the SAU 41 school districts will make anti-racism and equity a strategic priority and denounce all forms of institutionalized racism by supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. Two, SAU 41 will render services from an outside consultant approved by the boards to evaluate and advise district administration and educators on their policies, practices, and procedures relative to race, equity, and inclusion. And three, based on the consultation recommendations, the consult, consultation recommendations, the SAU 41 school districts will develop and release a plan to address the findings. These actions may include professional development, draft newer, edit existing policies and procedures, and curriculum review, et cetera. That's the end of the document. I do want to make clear because I read it, that it doesn't mean that I wrote it. So there's some things in here that I'll agree with and some things that I might want to tweak. So with that, I'll accept public input.
Diane Power, Brookline. I'd like to point out that the Hollis-Brookline Cooperative School District already has excellent model policies on all forms of discrimination, including racism. Policy AEC entitled "Nondiscrimination" states that the Hollis-Brookline Cooperative School District shall, shall not discriminate in its education programs, activities, or employment practices on the basis of gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, race, color, religion, nationality, ethnic origin, age, marital status, or disability. Also, there is currently a grievance procedure, Policy KED-R, entitled "Grievance Procedure for Alleged Discrimination," to address alleged violations of the Civil Rights Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the Age Discriminate, Discrimination Act. Therefore, it is unclear to me why it would be necessary to expend limited time, energy, and resources to devise a solution that already exists. Additionally, I would like to mention that I, yesterday as well as today, I heard mention the, that the schools are participating or utilizing the Choose Love Program curriculum. It's also unclear to me why it would be necessary to use taxpayer dollars, which- It's also unclear to me why it would be necessary to use taxpayer dollars, which we don't have in this current budget, to hire an outside consultant to evaluate current district policies and practices that have been in place and have served the school district well for years. Moreover, it is unclear to me why the expenditure of taxpayer dollars to support programs, professional development, and school curriculum as it pertains to social issues such as diversity, equity, and inclusion is an appropriate use of taxpayer funds. To be clear, I am not against parents and guardians teaching their children about these important issues, but I am uncomfortable utilizing taxpayer resources and valuable classroom instruction time at the expense of basic curriculum when a significant percentage of our students are behind, not proficient, in these subject areas.
You are over two minutes now, Ms. Power. Thank you.
I have one more sentence.
You can come back. Thank you. You can come back, yeah. I just want everyone to have a chance first, and then, I set a two-minute rule. I'm gonna, you know, keep the rule.
Aaron Penkasek, I live at 133 Dow Road in Hollis, New Hampshire. I'm going to read into record comments that were made by Andrew Scott at the July 20th Hollis Board meeting, which I am totally in agreement with. He can't be here to do other commitments, but I want to read them into the record. After reading parts of the initiative, which you just rehearsed, Mr. Scott said the following. He said, "I do not support using taxpayer money to bring in outside consultants. The voters in this community just gave our teachers and administration significant financial raises because we have confidence that you can do your job and do it well, which we all do. You know our community, our parents, and our kids. This increased sensitization is already happening organically. On Facebook, a U.S. literature curriculum teacher asked for community recommendations on BIPOC. BIPOC is Black, Indigenous, and People of Color, and LGBTQ literature, to update the curriculum in the library. In addition, the official HBHS library account posted a long note about filling in her own knowledge and understanding gaps and seeking to update the library accordingly. We don't need to hire outside consultants. Our teachers are doing their jobs and do not need to be told what to teach and how to teach from outside consultants. The proposal uses the word racism or anti-racism five times, inclusion five times, equity or equitable eight times, which I'll go off quote and point out is very different than equality. It's important to note that distinction, back on quote. There was a time when we all had a pretty good idea of what those terms meant. For example, if you ask most Americans today, what does it mean to be anti-racist, they would say something akin to the ideal exposed by Martin Luther King, that we are to be judged by character, the content of our character, not the color of our skin, but this is not what the word means today. In our culture, social justice via critical race theory is driving the cultural narrative. Critical race theory has very specific meanings to these words, which are not the same as what you might currently think. Before there is a vote on this initiative, please understand how these words are defined in our current cultural narrative and the implications of those definitions. There's a website out there, and it's been sent to the school board."
You're at two minutes. Thank you so much.
Okay. So don't use taxpayer money to pay for outside consultants.
Thank you so much. Can you repeat your name?
Yes, my name is Kathy Levitt. I live at Two Birch Hill in Brookline. Last night's Brookline School Board meeting, I said no one is harmed by participating in diversity, inclusion, and equity education. However, there is lasting demonstrable harm from lack of diversity, inclusion, and equity education. To quote Dr. Angela Davis, "It is not enough to be not racist. We must be anti-racist." Current SAU 41 policy does the legal bare minimum with anti-discrimination. This is not enough. As a teacher, one value I model for my students is being a lifelong learner. This means I, a full-grown woman, veteran, mother, stepmother, aspiring grandmother, all these labels I wear, I happily and openly declare, there is always more to learn. Over the past six weeks or so, a group of us in Brookline has been meeting to talk about racism in our small town, some that we've witnessed, some that's been committed against our family members and neighbors. We're mostly old, so imagine how much further along our children could be with diversity, equity, and inclusion training. Imagine how clear their vision through a lens of equity. There's life outside Hollis and Brookline, and we want our kids to join and shape that world. There's life inside Hollis and Brookline as well, and we deserve a community that embraces diversity, and equity, and inclusion. We need to abandon this "I don't want to and you can't make me" feeling for what is good for the community. Where better to learn the values of a community than in our community schools? It's not enough to say our values are learned at home. That should be good enough. It is not. We need diversity and equity education. Will some folks be uncomfortable with this? Absolutely. But that doesn't mean that our Black, Indigenous, People of Color children, neighbors, family members, and friends should continue to bear the burden of systemic racism. We do no harm in educating our kids in diversity, inclusion, and equity. We do real lasting harm ignoring the need for anti-racism education.
John Jacob, Nine Farm Pond Lane, Hollis.
I don't think I can hear you. Can you come a little closer to the microphone?
John Jacob, Nine Farm Pond Lane, Hollis. I hear a lot of stuff about institutionalized racism. I looked up what that, systemic racism. That means embedded in the core of your values that you're racist. That's what that term means. Not my definition, that's what's out there. And I'm trying to understand, what is it we're trying to say with that in this resolution? I mean, I could give you examples of systemic racism. I'm proud to say that my dad stood against the plan in the 60s and in the 50s in Mississippi and Louisiana, and received death threats. So I know from their stories what systemic racism is. That's a fine example, and teach that example. All throughout the 40s and the 50s, there was horrendous housing policies. There's a great book called The Color of Law, it talks about this. Teach that, that's a lot of systemic racism. I see that example. The war on drugs today is a fine example of systemic racism. Teach that. The saddest example of it, though, let me pull up this email from my daughter. Pardon me for a second. Sorry for the delay. Okay, I'm gonna round off the numbers. In 2005, and you can look these up, there was roughly just under 290,000 deaths, all reasons for all Black people. The same year, there was 440,000 aborted babies to blacks. That is the most systemic racist thing I can think of. I hope we teach that too. Thank you.
Hamplex 8 Maple Knoll Drive, I wanted to finish reading.
You're gonna need to be a little closer and a little louder.
Hamplex 8 Maple Knoll Drive, I wanted to continue reading this for Andrew Scott. And there are people in this community who do have different opinions than this very strong viewpoint that does get really pushed down our throats, and it doesn't, it is ripping our kids apart. We have a great school system here, we've got great teachers, and the anger and what we're hearing come through is not okay. I've got a kid in middle school, and if you knew what was going on social media, you'd be putting your efforts into dealing with how people treat each other, not about racism and instilling all of this hatred. But I would like to read from, continuing with Andrew Scott. Says, "A website that aims to be non-political while using primary sources to accurately define the comment, the comment on the definitions can be found at www.nudiscourses.com." Says, "Click on the Social Justice Encyclopedia and look up the keywords. It opened my eyes to a lot of things that I do not understand, and I think the school board and the community will be surprised if they too take the time to research the current meanings of these words. Clearly, defining these words should be an important part of this process before any vote. In summary, I'm asking the board to not use taxpayer money on outside consultants. Any outside consultant or other resource will be well-versed in social justice via critical race theory. So before voting on a proposal like this, I'm asking the board to please research more fully what these terms mean within the context of critical race theory and our current cultural moment." Thank you. And it's www.nudiscourses, N-E-W-D-I-S-C-O-U-R-S-E-S dot com. And just as a parting comment, last night on the Brookline School Board meeting, there was a, I guess it was a school board member, but the comment was, it said, the last time I checked, oh, sorry, it said, it had to do with kids, and they said, "They can do the math, but they can't coexist in a work group." And I'll tell you, the last time I checked, we had some pretty great kids, the kids that graduate and they go on to careers and school, and it just, that wasn't okay. We have a great community, and tons of people, you know, my daughter said she doesn't see color, and now she does.
Thank you.
We're wrecking our school system with this stuff, and I hope you all will really do your homework before we push this in.
Okay, two minutes, thank you.
Hi, it's Maria Nardi again, 46 Westview. I, well, I kind of just.
You can't, you need to face us, and you need to come close to the mic, because I can't, if I can't hear you.
I don't want to be repetitive, but I was, you still can't hear me?
Can you just tilt it up a little bit and get a little closer? I'm having a hard time hearing certain soft-spoken people.
Sorry about that. So I kind of stole my thunder, because I was going to say the same thing. We really need to look at the wording, because anti-racism doesn't mean what it used to mean, and it's very important to see really what it means. And I'll just read, I'm not sure if she mentioned the definition of what it is, but I'm just going to paraphrase. It's basically saying we're racist whether we know it or not, okay? And in this community, you know, I don't see racism, and I've asked people, you know, because I'm not afraid to talk about it. You know, people somehow say, and even in the meeting on Monday, somebody got up and said, "I know when it comes to racism, everyone's uncomfortable." Why? I'm not afraid to talk about it. So I call a friend of mine in town who happens to be Black, "What the heck is going on?" Okay? They don't see an issue here. We've talked to a number of people, they say there is no issue here. Okay, so why are we trying to break something, or that is, isn't, you know, or fix something? I don't even know what we're doing. It seems like everything is backwards now, but I know that our children like each other in this town, they respect each other, they don't see color. What is written in this Anti-Defamation League curriculum is that we now start to have to put people in groups. So you're going to identify as that group, and you're going to identify as that group, and these are types of people now instead of just people? And this is really, has nothing to do with all of MLK's work, and we all know that. So I don't really understand what is happening in this country. I don't know if it's a media frenzy or a social media phenomenon, but this is really not where we want to go. We're going to actually cause the children to become racists. That's my feeling. And I believe it's just a quote from a professor, Professor Godzad. "I have a dream," and this is sarcasm, "I have a dream that one day my children will be judged on immutable traits that are perfectly irrelevant. I have a dream that the ethos of individual dignity is rejected for the liberating power of tribal membership." I have a dream that merit-based thinking will soon be replaced by racist, bigoted, and discriminatory practice cloaked in the robe of social justice." Thank you.
I understa, excuse me, I understand that it's very difficult to get this in in two minutes, but we are here now, an hour passed when we anticipated being finished. I ask that you stick to the two-minute rule. If you can't, I don't know, but please do, out of respect for us. Thank you. Harold, right?
Harold Cadman, 169 Ebo Road. "This resolution appears to have been prompted by the recent murder of George Floyd in Minnesota in the resultant protests led by the BLM organization. Although I can certainly get 100% behind the statement Black Lives Matter, the fact of the matter is that the BLM organization itself does not honestly represent the statement Black Lives Matter. As their agenda is completely different, and I would like to draw this distinction here and now, I am 100% behind the statement Black Lives Matter, but am also diametrically opposed to the organization BLM. BLM is led by three self-described, highly-trained Marxist-Communist activists who espouse two very troubling principles for the BLM organization. According to their own website, they seek to destroy the Western concept of the nuclear family and to defund the police. This agenda is in direct conflict with any attempts to enhance and protect the lives of the Black community. A major component of the BLM organization is a group called Antifa, a group made up primarily of white militant anarchist provocateurs. These provocateurs instigate violence and vandalism during BLM protest marches, and those who would normally be peaceful protesters would then be caught up in the chaos and begin to participate in the violence and destruction themselves. Many Black experts say that the destruction of the nuclear family is creating all the violence and suffering within urban Black communities. The one thing that is keeping gang violence in these communities somewhat in check is the local police force. So it seems to me the BLM organization is not here to help the Black community, but rather to further undermine it. So what is my point? If nothing else, the point I want to make to this committee is that if you go outside the community for expert advice, do not hire consultants with any association with the BLM organization.
Thank you, Harold.
They are Marxist-Communist with an agenda that's completely destructive."
Thank you. Bob, thank you for all your cleaning.
Thank you, I'm gonna remove my mask. Can you hear me?
If you come a little closer, Melanie, and don't forget to.
First of all, I want to thank the school board, I want to thank Superintendent Corey and our assistant superintendents for the great work you have done.
Melanie, can you state your name, please? I'm sorry, can you state your name, please, and then we can start the talking?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Melanie LeVake, 2 McDaniel's Drive, Brookline. My apologies. So anyway, great work. I came to speak in favor of this resolution for nondiscrimination and equity. This is a resolution, not a policy. It is a statement, an expression of an opinion and intention that we are making, and one that the community is asking for, or I should say, many members of the community. The resolution came from members of our community in part because of the events of the past six weeks, starting with the death of George Floyd. That was the catalyst. This event unearthed disparities that have long been present in the areas of education, the workforce, and law enforcement, and I believe that it is up to each of us to be a part of the solution, and this resolution is a first step. I want to tell you a little bit about me very quickly. I've lived in Brookline for 30 years, almost 30 years. I've lived in New Hampshire for almost all of my life. I've served on the school board as a secretary for the Girl Scouts, I'm a trustee at my church, and a deacon. So I'm very involved. I'm a part of the community, and I've heard people speak about the community like I'm not part of the community. We are all a part. It is at this time when our community, when our children, when our people are calling out, you know, enough. We've seen people that have been killed before our eyes without any type of, you know, resolution. Nobody is blamed for this. You know, I personally know people who have been committing felonies.
Sorry, Melanie, that's it.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna come back after.
Okay, I have no problem with that. I just want to make. I just want to make, okay, I just want to make everyone get an opportunity, and then we'll have, it's the rule we set, and we're following it. It's like I'm a mom.
Cindy Reher, which is spring in Hollis. I am speaking in support of this resolution. I happen to have a child who is not Caucasian, who attends this school district, and I can tell you that regardless of whatever policies that we might have at the school, which was red, and I'm not sure, they sounded more like they were intended for staff, but perhaps they're intended for students as well. I am positive that my student doesn't even know they exist, and even if she knew, she would never, ever, ever come forward. That's not what students do. She sucks it up, she takes it, and generally speaking, I hear about it approximately three years after the event. So as a parent, I don't find about it, out about it until much later. So if you think that racially insensitive things or really, really inappropriate things don't happen in our school district, in our towns, you are really mistaken. They do, it's just that they're so predominantly white, you don't hear about them, but they're happening, and they're hurtful, and most kids will be fine and recover, and she's talked, you know, when she talked about it three years later, you know, she's okay, but do I wish she never had to go through that? Yeah. And is, does she ask you questions like, what hap, why could a black man be murdered on, you know, live in front of all of us and everyone watched it, and nothing happens? And I go, I don't have the answer to that. We need this training, whether it needs to be an outside consultant, I don't know, if we have the expertise in our towns, true expertise, who can be open-minded, then I'm fine with that, but we do need to have this.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Sue Hamel, I live at 15 Mendelson, and I just want to say that I actually believe that the Hollis Brookline staff actually has, not only do they have the resources and the common sense and the professional skills, and they are already teaching our children about equity, or actually equality, and, and race, and tolerance, and inclusion. I believe that's already been happening, I don't understand the need to have something be another into the strategic plan, because it sounds like it already is on multiple levels. And, and to address when situations arrive, I also believe that there are a lot of resources in place and protocols that actually can help that. We have mental health professionals on staff, correct? We also have counselors, and we have protocols that, that deal with that. It doesn't mean that things aren't going to happen, it means that we have our things already in place, which is, it sounds like the whole point of trying to hire someone from the outside to tell us how things aren't adequate enough. I will say that when I was 13, my mom moved my siblings and I to inner-city Phoenix from Massachusetts. I went to a school that had gang violence, drugs, and bars in the window. Every day I was threatened to, to be beat up because I didn't look like anybody else in the school. I was actually spit on on the bus. I know what that feels like. I know what real, real discrimination feels like on a personal level. And it's because I have this perspective, and I've also been, my children have attended schools across the nation as we've moved from military moves, I will say that I have a real-world perspective, and I can objectively say that Hollis Brookline actually has a great system. They have a current system, they have a wonderful system, they, they aren't afraid to have these conversations, our community's not afraid to have these conversations, we're already having them. And so I do think, I would caution everybody, that it's really easy sometimes if you are living in a Hollis bubble to not realize what the rest of the world looks like, but we're doing pretty damn good. And I just wanted to say that I actually think that our staff has the professionalism, has the current competency, and more importantly, they have the common sense to already do what they are doing. And I don't think that an outside agency is required. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Kaitlin Paree Peterson, Road, Brookline. Appreciate everyone taking the time to listen to us tonight. I've lived in Brookline for three years, we moved here for the schools, and I'm here in support of the Anti-Discrimination and Equity Resolution. Just want to share my perspective. I grew up in Vermont in a town that was a lot like Brookline, mostly white faces. I was taught there that I was not racist. Being racist is bad, Vermont is not a racist place. That's what I learned in school, that's what I learned at home, and I left at age 18 to go to college firmly believing I was not racist. And it took me a while to realize, actually, a lot of my worldview and the way I was interacting with people of color was, was racist. Just that was the truth of it. And I didn't know what I didn't know, and that's my point. I think a lot of us are in the situation where we just don't know what we don't know, and that's why an outside consultant is really critical, because who are we to discover all these things we don't know? We need someone with expertise who's outside of the bubble of Hollis and Brookline. I wish someone had started having these conversations with me when I was young, when I was in school, young, flexible mind, that there's a lot to learn, and I think we owe it to our children to make the schools a fair place for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle St. John, Orchard Drive, Hollis. I just want to thank the previous speaker for expressing her views, I think that was really important to hear. I'm sure all of you know that New Hampshire is the third whitest state in America, 94% white. And why, I'm here to say that I support this resolution, you know, I'm sure it deserves some tweaks, absolutely. I want to share with you, and I'm going to leave this, why white students need multicultural and social justice education. And this was written by Dr. Sheldon Ekins, the founder of Leading Equity Center, and the host of the Leading Equity Podcast. I won't read his qualifications, but, and I'm just going to be summarizing a couple of things. What multicultural education can teach our white students? Understanding their own cultural and ethnic background. Studying implicit bias in everyday language. Examining representation in curriculum and beyond. You know, we can look and see what we're teaching our kids and improve upon that, and if we need guidance, so be it. Understanding and recognizing privilege and dismantling racism. Sometimes we teach our students how to be kind to others, embrace diversity, and respect differences. We can go beyond that by teaching our white students how to be anti-racist actively and do their part to support advocacy towards social justice and reform. The foundation for teaching our students how to engage in these practices actively is by helping students understand their white racial identity and positionality in society. From there, students may have a better understanding of the need for a multicultural approach in education, and what they can do to find their voice and role in creating-
Thank you, Michelle.
-a socially just society. Thank you, I will come back, I have more to say.
Thank you, Michelle.
Joe Garuba, 28 Winchester Drive. So some of the information that came out of the meeting on Monday night, I had a chance to do a little research into. I looked into the racial bias educational programs of the Anti-Defamation League, which was proposed to be brought in to be an outside consultant. If we adopt the proposed resolution, these are the type of curriculum changes that we can expect to be recommended. I want to share with you some of the content that I found at the ADL website. It's listed in an article labeled, "How Should I Talk About Race With My Mostly White Classroom?" The article attempts to downgrade the concept of personal responsibility and promote group and racial identity in its place. In a section titled, "Clarify That The Goal Is Not To Be Color Blind," the ADL says, "There are many white people who believe the best way to eliminate racism is to not talk about it and not notice racial differences at all, i.e. to be colorblind. This may also be a way to avoid dealing with discussions of race because they are uncomfortable." I can tell you, I am not uncomfortable. I want to teach my children to form opinions of others based on their actions and their efforts, not their racial identity. This is surely the way forward to a more just world. More importantly, however, a public education is intended to teach our children the fundamental scholastic disciplines, not political theories. The ADL recommends teaching the concept of white privilege, and it defines it as, "Unearned and often unseen or unrecognized advantages, benefits or rights conferred upon people based on their membership in a dominant group beyond what is normally, commonly experienced by members of the non-dominant group." Stop and think about that for a while.
Okay, Joe, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to have to come back.
I know, I know, maybe the system's not the greatest, but it's what we decided, so I just- Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet on this topic?
Donna Lavassar, Depot Road, Hollis. I just wanted to thank you, to all present and not present, who have done the heavy lifting in order to get our schools open in September, kudos to you all. I want to speak specifically to the potential of hiring an outside consultant to provide professional development for our teachers, and having input on what specific curricula potentially could be taught to our students in the district. I am a million percent against hiring an outside consultant because I'm a person who's in favor of local control. What is a specific philosophical background of said consultant? Will a subject matter be taught from the position of a social justice warrior? Will terms from critical theory be introduced into our classrooms? Inserting words like systemic implied or institutionalized in front of the word racism carries very specific meanings. These words accuse our society, culture, and way of life as being wrong. How awful it would be to teach our children they are racist but do not know it. I was at the Hollis School Board meeting on Monday evening, and a speaker came up to the microphone, and she said that our country was founded on white supremacy. No, it was not. It was not. I have great faith in our school board, in our administration, great, great faith, and I know not one of you believes that our country was founded on white supremacy, I know that. I can't read my own handwriting, I should have been a doctor. This is my hope, that if and when a curricula is developed, professional teaching materials are created, a policy is created, a resolution is created, all those things, that great care and thought will be put into choosing materials that are consistent with the values in our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Marie Ramos, I live on 9 Colbert Lane in Hollis, and first, I want to say thank you for having this conversation. I want to thank the, the community members who are interested and concerned for the well-being of their children. Like I said on Monday, I grew up in New Hampshire, and I wanted to share a picture of my experience growing up in New Hampshire as a Haitian-American young lady. I have never had a white, a black teacher or a person of color teach me until I was in college. I want to make you understand the difference between discrimination, which is an interpersonal judgment and prejudice, particularly about a person or persons, and equity, which is a systemic evaluation of structures, policies, and hierarchy in the way organizations run. I just looked up that the U.S. Department of Education said that there are, as of 2017, that's the most recent, 8% of the teachers in America were black. It also says that people of color have a higher rate of being disciplined within our schools, and at a harsher rate. I want to ask you this question. I have a son that is 12, that's in the middle school, I have a daughter that's nine, I have a little one that we're ready and eager to go to kindergarten. They need to ask me, "Mom, why is it that in history class, I don't see anybody that looks like me? Mom, we're Haitian, right? Why don't they teach that they were Haitians that actually fought in the Revolution?" Thank you, and I'll come back. She did.
Yes.
Okay, you can start. So, what I love about a democracy is that in a democracy, we all have a voice to share our opinions. We know in a democracy, not everyone knows how to use their voice well, or feels empowered or brave, but they will let us know our opinions. What I don't love about a democracy is that oftentimes in a democracy, the weight of expertise is not given to the voices, and especially in education, that is true. So unlike where, if I were a medical doctor or a psychiatric doctor, I might have some weight here, as an educator, I might not have as equal a weight. But there are some things that are non-negotiables as educators. Every teacher, no matter our difference, knows these things, that we are civil servants and we are here to serve our kids, not our adults, not anyone but our kids, and we realize that our kids in this community need to figure out how to have important conversations around issues that affect their lives. Now that doesn't call us racist, that doesn't say that we are not empathetic and caring and loving and an amazing town, we are, we really are. But I'm telling you right now that this town is working in some ways at a deficit. So I, I had to, in a, in a project that I have to do for a class, I interviewed a high school student going into their senior year, and I asked them last night, I asked them, "What, tell me a time where you had discourse and engaged in conversation with students and adult around issues?" And there were two examples. There was a suicide that happened in our town, and in that time, the, the principal and the guidance counselor came to the class and spoke to the class.
Tiffany, you are over.
I will come back.
Scott Renier, Center Drive, Brookline. I'm speaking in support of the Racial Equity and Inclusion Initiative. I believe it's an important initiative to undertake as soon as possible for a couple of reasons. I think it's fiscally responsible to undertake this work as soon as possible. While there's a cost associated with having a consultant review our existing policies, that cost is far outweighed by the cost of litigation that we're exposed to by not having completed that review. And any judgments against us would likely require us to complete the review that we're requesting today. I also believe that proof of such a review is likely- I also believe that proof of such a review is likely to be a requirement for school districts to access state and federal funds. This is a trend that we're seeing. The same reviews are taking place in companies across the country. If you haven't heard from your company about how they're addressing issues of racism in their current policies, you soon will because they recognize the risk of a potential discrimination lawsuit. If we wait for that requirement to be established, we'll be competing with many other school districts for the same pool of consultants who are qualified to complete the review. Those consultants will become unavailable and unaffordable. By getting started now, we have access to a larger pool of consultants and a better position for negotiation. I also think it's important to begin this work as soon as possible because it's the right thing to do. We're not looking for a problem here, a problem exists. Our current nondiscrimination policy that was read earlier is the bare minimum required by law. Our mission statement and student handbooks do not include a commitment to inclusion or embracing diversity as values, so there is work to be done. We need an outside consultant to help this work, because a full review of systematic racism is part of the system that taught us. Systematic racism is part, systematic racism is part of the system that taught us. So, when we're brought up in that system, we're not able to recognize racism in the policies that we've experienced in our entire lives. We understand that our intentions are not racist, but racism is defined by the person experiencing the racism, not by our intentions. A full review of the policies and curriculum is required to ensure we're providing a welcoming environment for learning for all students, and now is the time to do it.
Thank you. I think I have one more new speaker coming, oh, two, okay. I have Fred, I have Brooke, I have David, and I have Mark. And, sorry, I don't know you, but now I know you're Tanya.
No problem. Mark Ladue, Down Road, Hollis. I want to congratulate you all on conducting a very timely meeting, and also with the efforts to secure a positive reopening of the campuses for school. It's not easy, nobody ever gets what they want all the time, that's life. That said, I think the resolution that's before you really should be addressed a little more thoughtfully as it relates to the premises on which it was created. As the chairman of the board of the Select Board here in town, which is the governing body of our community of Hollis, I would be witness to systemic racism. In my 15 years on the board, I have not witnessed systemic racism. I would also point out that our police force is one of only, I believe, 15 in the entire state that has independent national certification, COLIA. And what they do is they make really sure that these issues that we're hearing about tonight, and we've heard about all week, dealing with race, gender, equity, outcomes, those types of issues, are dealt with on a policy manner and in a recurrent training manner. You already have the language, you need to review it. I agree with the speakers that say we don't need to go outside. There is a wealth of knowledge in this combined community, lawyers, HR professionals, people engaged with running multinational companies such as myself. I can bring you policies from 15 different countries. The bottom line is, the fact that you're having this conversation is very positive. I, for one, think that we really ought to make a firm statement for both communities. We will not abide racism under any circumstance found anywhere within our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Next speaker. I think we're gonna hear David, right? I think that's your name.
Good evening. My name is David Warner. I'm 1-4-Ag Ridge Road. I'm a refugee from California. I've been here for three years. In my professional life, I was a trial attorney, which means that for 42 years, I had the benefit of conflict, morning, noon, and night. And it wasn't coming from my wife, it was coming from my business. And I got tired of it. And finally, I one day said, "You know what? I've had enough conflict for the rest of my life," and I came here, because it was so peaceful and calm, and I have a nice backyard, and I got my lifelong dream of a John Deere X380 garden tractor, which I love to ride. But then all of a sudden, a bomb gets dropped to my peaceful, contentful life, which has this resolution at the heart of it. And I don't want to get involved in a discussion other than to make certain observations. There's three sides to this conflict. One side seems to be what was voiced by the first speaker, a legitimate interest in trying to deal with a serious problem. I think I told you before that I have a very serious aversion to racism. As part of my practice, I sued and got a lot of punitive damage awards for racism. I don't tolerate it. If it's here in this town, show me where it is, I'll step on it. But my point is this, there is a group of people that are in favor of a legitimate discussion, but then there's another group that I would just call ideologues, that have a political agenda, that has nothing to do with bringing peace to this community, but it has to do with fomenting their own ideology. One of the speakers earlier cited to you Angela Davis. She's an avowed communist that has called for the destruction of the United States government. I attended her classes at UC Berkeley. She was a wonderful teacher, but that's her goal. The third group are parents, who are simply saying, "There's no racism here, we don't get it, but mostly, we don't want our kids subject to an outside political ideology that's gonna brainwash them and tell them things that are not true." So that, to me, is what the conflict is. And it doesn't just affect the schools, it affects this community. So squarely on your plate is something that is dividing this community, and I would ask you to put it out to the top of the future.
You're at two minutes, sir.
To resolve that conflict.
Thank you. Bob, you're getting your steps in.
Can you hear me?
Try again.
Closer?
Yeah, that's better.
All right. My name is Tanya Vera, and I live at 6 Nightingale Road in Brookline. I want to speak in support of the Hollis-Brookline Nondiscrimination and Equity Initiative. I know that the wording has to switch around. I had something prepared, but the big thing that I want to address is that, when I look in this community, I've been here for 12 years, it is a predominantly white community. And I know that there's 13.4% of America that is black. So, when I look around and I don't see that many students here, or that many families living here, or that many teachers represented here, there are factors that are playing into that. And so, my interest in this is to assess what, if anything, can be done here, what needs to change. And so, there are just a bunch of questions in my mind that I think need to be asked, and it's clear to me, from listening to the people who have come up to the podium, I don't think that there's any ill intention in anyone's heart, all right? But I do think that we don't look at just the base number. Look around. We don't, our demographics do not reflect the rest of this country. And when I look, I also know that in students of color, the few that there are in New Hampshire, for example, do get disciplined at a higher rate, and it is more severe. I don't know if you have those statistics. I would like to see them, if you do. But these are the kinds of things that I know happen. When I look at the town list, I see language there that I, it makes my brain explode. I avoided the groups for 12 years, because I know that I am uncomfortable listening to that language. I have friends who have children in these systems, and they have been called the N-word, all right? And that is a personal level. So, yes, thank you very much, and maybe I'll come back with my friends testing.
Thank you. Anyone else new? Quickly? Fred. This is our last new speaker, I haven't seen anyone else rise. Oh, Brooke, sorry, okay. Brooke, I won't, thank you.
Hi, Fred Hubert, 46 Westview Road in Brookline. I just wanted to come up and talk about this. I think that you guys are all leaders, right? You're here to lead, you're either hired to lead, or you're elected to lead. You're not expected to follow and to jump on a bandwagon, so I hope that anything that you do is not about following a wave and jumping on a bandwagon, right? When we talk about the leadership, it sounded to me, when Mr. Thompson spoke earlier about the Choose Love Initiative, that we already have this in place, right? I think he said that it talks about, you know, racial equity and, you know, nondiscrimination, right? So, we're already doing that. Another speaker talked about the policies that we already have in place, right? I run an outdoor flag football league in this community, and I hire high school kids to be the referees. A lot of them, it's their first job. Some of them are people of color. One of them posted to social media, "What's going on here? This is crazy. That's not happening here," right? We had a football practice, we have to be in small groups at this point still, so we didn't have the whole team there, but one of the groups was there tonight. We had a few peoples of, people of color in that group. I called them over, I asked them, "Is it happening here?" "No, coach," right? I had some rising seniors who weren't people of color. I asked them, "No, coach, it's not happening in our community. We know that it happens in other places, we know it's not happening here." I would like to point out one instance that I've observed of that happening. We were at a playoff game in Kennet just this past fall, and one of our players was called a racial slur, and our team didn't shrug it off. Our team was outraged. Thank you. We had to call a timeout.
Thank you.
We had to settle our kids.
Didn't really want to interrupt you on that. Thank you.
Hi, Brooke Arthur, 74.
You can lower it, yeah.
Bring it down. Brooke Arthur, 74, Ridge Road in Hollis. I want to thank the board for listening to all the speakers tonight, and I want to especially thank Superintendent Corey for his input this evening. It's an emotional topic, and I can feel that in the room. I've had a role in the developing of this dialogue, and I would like to state that it is not a political agenda for me. I am not a political person. I'd need to say that because that was insinuated. It's born out of ongoing dialogue that I've had with administrators for years. However, the recent national events made it that people started listening, and it provided an opportunity that it was talked about in a way that it wasn't before. And so, I also want to mention, I don't have it in front of me because my phone died that end, but I believe I shared some professional academic organizations that link the necessity of racial equality and inclusion efforts in their reopening plans. I think that was received by the board and administrators? Yes? Okay. And so, I just want to share a quote from Wengari Mahai. She was the first African woman to receive the Nobel Peace Prize. And she says, "In the course of history, there comes a time when humanity is called to shift to a new level of consciousness, to reach a higher moral ground, a time when we have to shed our fear and give hope to each other. That time is now." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, at this point, is there anyone who would like to finish whatever statement they had started? Again, two minutes.
Diane Power, Brookline. To conclude my previous public input, I wanted just to say that public schools supported by public tax dollars must focus its attention on the mission of educating students in the basics, and to leave these discretionary teachings to families. And again, as the former chair and member of the Hollis-Brookline Co-op Budcom, it occurred to me that since this initiative and any related funding was not identified as an expenditure within this current operating budget, it would most likely be deemed as new spending, and therefore would not be permitted under New Hampshire RSAs. You might want to check into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I left off with an interview that I had to do for a class for a student that's an upcoming senior, and I asked that upcoming senior, when they had engaged in structured dialogue with an adult and that knew them well in the building, and with their peers. And they said there were two instances. One, when an event that I mentioned, but that wasn't actually dialogue, they listened to a principal and a guidance. And then there was another, and it was in response to the Parkland shootings. They didn't have dialogue, they were able to walk. I said, "Can you think of an organic time?" Because we're talking about, I've heard a lot about organic relationships being built, where kids can build the skills of having critical conversations. And she's, they, they identify, said, "No." "No." I said, "No, not in your science class, not in your social studies, like maybe something happened," and that goes to show, we can't leave it to organic relationship building. Niasse has said, "Everywhere you look, the number one indicator of success for kids is for an adult to know them well." Our kids are going into a multicultural world, and it's not in accordance with the demographics of our town, but that's the truth, and they need the skills. I also want to talk about the fact that those inorganic relationships among coaches and their players, which are so important. I have, I come from a very athletic family, my boys love sports, and I know they build those relationships. They're very lucky that they have those. But when you look at the way kids will respond to another town in defense of their peers, oh, it's really strong. "I've been on that team. Don't you dare come against us, the Hollis-Brookline." But, how do they defend the one that's in the peer group when you're on the bus and someone's touching your Afro?
Okay, Tiffany, you have, you're over two minutes again, so. At this point, I'd like to...
And that is it. We need to train our kids in critical conversations.
Thank you.
So, let's make that a part of our curriculum.
Thank you. Did you rise to speak? And you haven't spoken yet. Is that Charlotte? Come on up. Sorry, John, I'm just gonna, she hasn't spoken yet, so I'm gonna let her speak first, and then you can go next. The masks, man, like...
Charlotte Trotten, 32, Hideaway. Started to interrupt the order, but I was at home watching and got angry enough that I got in my car and drove over. So, watching this from home kind of just brought a lot out in me. It was almost, we have a room full of white people talking about how we have no racism in our town. It was almost like, no offense to the men in this building, but like listening to a man tell us how much childbirth hurt. You can't tell me that. I own it, I felt it, and we can't know what we don't know, like many people have said. And I am concerned that so many people in our town are trying to educate our kids and give them more tools, unless we're just shaken when they came home. I personally have one of those students in my family, who I thought, living in a household that he grew up in, that he would have had the tools to know what to say, and he did not. And they all came home upset about this. So, I fully support giving our tools and our school the support to give our kids everything they need to go out into this world, to fight the fight that they need to fight, to support every single student in HB, regardless of skin color, background, or family upbringing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for sitting down and coming back.
So, John Jacob, I'm Farm Pond, Hollis. I also live in Greenville, South Carolina simultaneously. Greenville, South Carolina's demographics are very different than Hollis, New Hampshire. I lived most of my life in the South. I moved here in 2000. I'm 55 years old. I noticed the whiteness of New England. It's not just Hollis, New Hampshire, it's New England. I noticed that, it's true. Has nothing to do with the towns and the policies, it has everything to do with the mathematics of the population. It's plain and simple. My neighborhood in South Carolina, I have neighbors of all... My neighborhood in South Carolina, I have neighbors of all colors. It's perfect harmony. There's no problem. I did nothing different in selecting a home than I did when I bought my home in Hollis. The town did nothing differently for me either. It's pure mathematics on population demographics. That's all it is. To think that the term racism is, is, and, and so I get the, I get the notion that people say, "We don't know what we don't know," and it's cultural ignorance. And I don't mean to say that in a negative way. Ignorance meaning that we're just not experienced. I get that. I get people saying that. Cultural ignorance due to a lack of experience is not racism. There is no malice in that. The examples I've heard today, there was no malice in that. Racism is a dirty thing. It's got a dirty history, and it's full of hate and malice, and to try to bring it into a resolution without making that point very clear, that we're educating on cultural differences and we're not accepting the fact that we have systemic embedded cultural racism in this community, is a distinction that needs to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay. At this point, can anyone who's going to come back please rise so I have a sense of how many more speakers we have? Okay. These are the last four speakers to speak. There will be no other speakers after these four speakers. And I have Michelle, Joe, Maria, and Senator Levesque, Melanie. Thank you.
I just want to follow up from the previous speaker saying why, uh, he just, to me, stated the fact why multicultural education is 100% relevant in white schools. It is true that we don't know what we don't know, but I also wanted to make a point that what Superintendent Corey had said. First, I wanted to say, the students brought this to his attention. The students want this. The students want to be better people and better prepared for when they enter society. How many of these students are going to stay in Hollis Brookline? How many of these students are going to move to other areas? And they need those tools. They need to be better citizens in where they live. And I think that is really important. Superintendent Corey also mentioned resiliency and what makes our country great, us great as a country. We're great as a country when we include everyone. And that resolution also stated diversity and inclusion. And that could mean students with disabilities, students who are on the LBD, LGBTQ spectrum, students of color. Everybody is different. We are all different, and we should learn how to respect each other in our differences and support each other. And I wholeheartedly think, whatever tweaking needs to happen, this needs to happen for the future of Hollis Brookline and those kids who are going out into the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Joe?
So I'm just going to reread the definition that the ADL gives, our potential consultant gives, for white privilege. It is unearned and often unseen or unrecognized advantages, benefits, or rights conferred upon a people based on their membership in a dominant group beyond what is commonly experienced by members of the non-dominant group. Now stop and think about that just for a moment. Any achievement that is made, no matter how much hard work is put into it, that accomplishment, if it's by a white student, could potentially be the result of an unseen or unrecognized advantage. Any weakness or shortcoming by a black student could potentially then become the result of white privilege. This logical mind bender is what we're talking about teaching to our children as curriculum. I want to teach my children that they should be proud of their accomplishments based on their efforts, and I want to teach them that their failures are opportunities that they can learn from. I don't want, I don't want this, the logical concept of white privilege taught as if it's, as if it's a fact. Since the definition includes unseen or unrecognized advantages, all differences and outcomes are attributable to race rather than an individual's hard work, talent, or determination. Do we want to teach this to our children as fact? The article, uh, on the ADL website goes on to describe a method to get students to accept the concept of white privilege, and I'm quoting here. If students are going to engage in conversations about race, that privilege has to be on the table. Here again, the proposed curriculum is going far beyond facts and history. I don't want my children taught to feel guilty for things that happened long before they were born.
Joe, you've hit two minutes again.
This concept flies in the face of logic.
Thank you, Joe.
We cannot teach our kids political theory. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very glad that the previous speaker talked about facts. So as a physician scientist and an expert in equity, a person who served on the board of the American Academy of Family Physicians, a current board member for the New Hampshire Academy of Physicians, I can understand why my organization that represents 100, almost 140,000 family doctors in this country, who takes care of the sickest of the sickest, made a public announcement that racism is a public health crisis. It's a crisis because day in and day out, us physician scientists see the numbers, and day in and day out, you educators see the numbers. There is a lower rate of succession from high school to college for people of color, period. And we cannot deny the fact that Brown versus Board of Education happened and said separate was equal. It was done for a reason, and it was done particularly in order to keep privileged communities in a certain area in power. We have to acknowledge that. It's an ugly, ugly history. It is mean, it is awful, but listen, that's our country. It's our country, it's our history. That's what makes us who we are as a nation. But the best thing about being in America, my friends, is that we were able to grow and we're able to change and be nimble. And I am proud that after being here for four years, that this community of concerned citizens understands the importance of being nimble, of responding to needs and assessments, and for doing that in an evidence-based way. So equity has nothing to do with personal thoughts or views. We all have bias, and we don't know what we don't know because we've just been born with it. We don't know what we don't know because we've been taught. If I see all throughout my education, white men...
I'm so sorry, but you need to stop.
No problem. Then that's all I'm gonna think is going to be positive. So I also recommend to the, to our listeners to look at Robin Elliott, um, and to look at Black Doll, Blue Eyes.
Okay, you need to go. Thank you.
It sounds like we have a lot of work to do, and I'm very much in support of this resolution. And I want to say once again, it is not creating policy, but it is stating an intent of our values. This is really your document to work with now and make the document one that we can all support. So, you know, I, I want to say that it is not so much a resolution about racism. I hear a lot of talk about racism. We're not calling anybody a racist per se, but there are, there are traits, there are, you know, there are things that happen that are inherently racist, and I'm not saying that they're here, but they're all over. But this is not a resolution about racism, but it's a resolution about our humanity and our, our commitment to understanding each other. And based on the conversations that we have been having today, I think we need someone to help us understand each other. Because, you know, I love you all, but we're being pretty hard on each other, and we don't need to be. Okay, so, um, Mr. Chair, Miss...
Madam.
Madam Chairman.
Or Holly, at work.
Yes. And members of the school board, I ask for your support of the resolution, which is the declaration of our humanity, because it is never the wrong time to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. At this point, um, I'm going to close public comment. Um, we'll move to a discussion from the board. I do want to say that I truly appreciate all of the comments. Um, I might not agree with all of the comments, but I appreciate the courage and the, the gumption that got you up to the microphone to share your feelings on this. I think this is a conversation that we need to continue to have, and, um, I'm gonna let the other board weigh in, and then if there's anyone who needs to weigh in on this, and then I'll close out if anyone...
Is this our discussion?
This is our discussion now. We went from presentation, public input, to our discussion of this, the resolution, if you will, or how we'd like to proceed with that.
Do you want to defer real discussion to a later date, or do you want to continue for a while? Because I suspect there are a number of...
I would be comfortable leaving this for us to sit with and for us to comment on at a later date if the rest of the board feels like that would be a more appropriate way to go. It is, the hour is late. It's 9:45.
Are we gonna have to take action on this at the next meeting?
No.
Okay. Do we have a plan for the, I know that you mentioned legal counsel. So the other two boards have agreed to, did not vote on that, but by consensus general, felt like this could go to legal counsel.
Correct. You know, I would, and since it's there, with the other two boards indirectly, we'll split the cost and get the benefits for all three boards. And then I have been at three different meetings. There have been some speakers that have been common to all the meetings. There have been other speakers that only were able to attend one, so this would give me an opportunity to kind of take all the notes and feedback I have and kind of bring that back to the board, um, during our discussion.
That's fine with me.
I just have a question. Has there been any discussion of what, which district counsel we would use for this matter?
I was, I intended to Drummond and Woodson.
Is, is this going to, is action on this going to be taken at the SAU level or at individual district levels?
I, I think because it governs the students in the district, that it is a district decision. Now, the SAU board could, through policy, affirm those decisions, but I think, uh, the boards are elected to...
In that context, I just want to say that I am, I am not supportive of the language of the resolution, particularly in the context of it being put forth as a resolution. I think it's premature for it to go to legal right now until a board lays in on whether or not, on what they would support, potentially support, if they support anything.
Right. And just to be aware, Brookline and Hollis sent it more to legal to get a clarification on what a resolution meant to a school board versus what I, what they were wondering about a policy.
So you...
Just on that narrow question?
Yes.
That, that I don't have...
That narrow question seems...
That I don't object to, but I, I don't want a review of the content of, of...
No, specifically, and I think Rob Mann might have expressed it the best, was he wanted to know exactly what a resolution meant to a school board, because we don't typically work in the resolutions field.
Beth?
Sure. Uh, thank you. Oh, it's a lot louder this time. Um, I have a lot of comments on this, but I'm gonna just, uh, hold most of them for when we can discuss further. But for me, um, in order to support any kind of outside support, I always want to know costs. I can't vote on anything without knowing cost and what, what we intend to gain from that. So as we move forward, that's something I would hope, you know, that you could help with, and I know you started that, but it's just for me, I need more.
Yeah, we haven't made any determination on outside. I, I think Mr. Gruber spoke to, uh, I had reached out to the Anti-Defamation League because it's just a resource. I reached out to a gentleman who spoke at the superintendent's, uh, conference as a resource. I'm not committing the district or committing the boards to any fees at this time. Uh, I think when I heard our last speaker speak, saying that, you know, the document was now ours and kind of to move it forward, I think that's something that we can look at internally, and I know there are some people sitting in this room who've already volunteered to assist in that process, and, and it may be something we can tackle. My concern, as I said earlier, was just simply around the bandwidth issue, because I have to make reopening the number one priority.
Yeah, absolutely, and I, and I appreciate that, Andy, and I appreciate the support. I just wanted to make sure that was understood, that it's not that I'm for or against outside consultant. I'd have to understand more before supporting that. But then just the other comment, and like I said, I'll save everything for later, um, the comments that this doesn't exist in our community, doesn't take a lot of research to see that it does. I have a child at the high school, one at the middle school, one at upper elementary, and one at lower elementary, and just talking to a couple of my own and a couple of other students, it's a real problem. And to me, how you interpret things and how we view things may be different, but to me, diversity is not at all about race, it's about what makes us different. That can be our socioeconomic status, it can be religion, it can be politics, it can be so many things. But to me, um, in my perspective, that's something diversity should be celebrated, and I think that we have a very big problem here. The other part of my poster, it doesn't, it says in here, "We don't have policy." We do have policy, but clearly the policy's not working. So words alone don't change things, but I'm not, uh, I agree with what Tom and Liz had said too. Like, I want more information on what a resolution actually means, but, um, I, I just, I very, I feel very, very strongly that we do have issues here. It's not, we've been told to just teach the basics, and public school is about everything but the basics, and that's why I'm sitting in this seat. So I just want to make that clear, that, um, I fully support some of the intentions, but I need to understand so much more, so I can't support any of this as it's written right now.
That's fine. Is there anyone else who wants to weigh in at this point?
So, I, I mean, I think my biggest way in at this point is really trying to be protective of our administrative staff. I'm really concerned about bandwidth, and we've always placed a lot on our administrative staff, and there's been very few times that I've heard them raise their hand and say that they had too much on their plate. And I am interested in this topic, but I feel that I have too much going on in my brain, which is under a lot of stress due to COVID, and we've been in this very high-stress state now for four months. I feel like we need to get the kids back in the building, um, because I think that if we don't get them back in the building, we're going to have serious negative consequences to women in general, who are gonna take a big hit in the workplace, and, and we, then, when we can kind of turn to another issue, we can have the bandwidth to have an intelligent and calm conversation and figure out what the next move is, whether it's going with this organization or another organization, or using our internal resources. But very few times have I heard our administrative staff say, "We don't have the bandwidth to take this on," and I'm hearing that loud and clear right now, and I want to come to their protection and advocate for them and try to at least move this into a state where it's a better season to have this conversation. And that might be a matter of weeks, that might be a matter of months. We're just going to have to pivot to that when it is going to become the, a, a time where we're not under quite so much stress.
It's interesting that you say that, because, um, about March, we had our first meeting of Portrait of a Cavalier, which was a meeting designed to talk about what we think a cavalier, a person who graduates from our pre-K through 12 district, will graduate with. And, um, we were in the middle of that work, members of us on that committee, when COVID struck. So, um, it's important to keep in mind that we are in a crisis right now. This is a crisis. And we have two crises going on, because we definitely have a crisis related to race. But at this point, as with crisis work, you know, if you're triaging a patient, you're taking care of one thing, maybe everything, I don't know, I'm not a doctor, but we need to consider how we go about this, and we need to support our administration in that. So I certainly will say that I would like to see us take action on this. I would like to see us move forward. I also am very sensitive to the fact that our students asked our principal for action on this at the high school and probably at the middle school. And so it's important for us to keep that in mind as we move forward. I'm not saying whether a consultant is the right way to do it, or if it's a group, but I do think we have to do this. I just think we need to breathe and get our kids back in the building. And I understand that some people feel like that means that we need to get them back in the building and fix this too. I think we have a problem that needs fixing. I think problems take a long time to fix, and so I'm hoping that we can work towards that.
May I suggest that we possibly table this until October, um, not because it's unimportant, but because it is important. This clearly has struck a nerve in our community. There's more discussion regarding this than there was about reopening our schools. So... So I really, I, it needs to be discussed further, and, and we need to look into how we deal with it, and I think it's important, and so therefore I think it needs to be done thoughtfully, deliberately and carefully, and not just trying to rush into anything. So is there a possibility of us possibly tabling, even discussing this further, or having our administration work on it further, other than looking into the legal ease of it? What a proclamation is?
So I just want, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think tabling is sort of a, an action, and we're not taking an action on this.
Okay.
So it's basically whether or not it'll appear on our agenda for next month, and it'll go through the agenda-building process that we go through every month, where the superintendent and me and, you know, others will kind of weigh in on that.
Okay.
So I think that's the best process for that, knowing, getting the sense of the board that, you know, there seems to be an appetite for taking this on a little bit later. We can, we can figure that out. That's what I would say.
Okay.
Since we're really not taking an action on it at this point. Okay. Is there anything else?
Are we having non-public tonight?
What?
We have non-public tonight.
We do not have non-public. So at this point, is there any other comment from the board? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, I need a report out from the process observer, sorry. A quick one.
Okay. Well, other than the fact that we ran double time, I think it was productive, but I will say that having watched two previous meetings and participated in this and the duplication and repetition, perhaps what we can learn from it is, the forum for discussion like this might be something outside the board meeting environment, where we have public interface, we have the tools, and we have the time to have the interaction that I think the public seeks. That's a personal opinion, but seeing how all three meetings had a lot of overlap, and I think everyone would benefit from having heard it all, it might, in the future, be better to take this conversation community-wide.
Okay. Thank you. I need a, are you done? Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved to second.
Moved by Liz, seconded by Beth, all in favor. Thank you. Good night, thank you all.